His community and people that could support him and understand him in ways that his dad and I never could. So I am, so now y'all know why I spent so many hours in school administrators' offices. And unfortunately, because of the pushback they get, especially with young children, a lot of school administrators were afraid to address it because I've known he was gay since he was three. I mean, and at the time, there was not the word gender fluid, but I knew he was absolutely gender fluid at that point. And I think he presents a lot now cisgender because he's afraid to do anything else. But, so I'm really excited that this is the first Pride Month, that he will be able to go out and spend time with his community because he decided that if I said this, then he didn't have to worry about anybody knowing because everybody would know. And so now everybody knows and he can, I hope he will be comfortable going to Pride activities. And I've tried to get him to go to the center since he was in middle school. And he's never been willing to go, so I hope he can find support with their programs and just connect with his community. And so we'll see what happens with that. He was going to come today, but he's working, he couldn't get off work in time. So having said all of that, what I thought I would do was read the proclamation and then you guys could make any comments and then I'll introduce our guests who will be receiving it. And before I read the proclamation, I want the LGBT plus community to know that we hear you, we see you, and we value you for who you are. I hereby make the motion that whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Pride Month is celebrated nationwide in June each year, and whereas this month was, chose to commemorate the riots that took place at the Stonewall Inn in Manhattan, New York on the morning of January, June 28th, 1969, and that's really not that long ago, often viewed as the birth of the modern LGBT plus rights movement, and whereas it is important to remember those affected by the riots and to reflect on the LGBT rights movement, and whereas despite great progress, LGBT plus Americans still face discrimination simply for who they are, whereas the county of Wake stands with the LGBT plus community in the struggle to ensure equal treatment for all, and whereas the county of Wake will continue to defend and advocate for LGBT plus rights as human rights, whereas Executive Order Number 24 NC 958-962, which was issued on October 18th, 2017, establishes policies prohibiting discrimination, harassment, and retaliation on the basis of sexual orientation and general, gender identity or expression in state employment, state services, and state contracts under the jurisdiction of the Office of the Governor. Whereas Executive Order Number 24 directed the Secretary of the Department of Administration to create the Commission on the Inclusion, to identify additional policies and measures that promote diversity and inclusion, and whereas the county of Wake strives to make our community a place where all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression are treated equally. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wake County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as LGBT plus Pride Month and commend its observance to all its citizens, adopted this sixth day of June 2022. So moved, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll take that as a motion. Then is there a second?
A second.
It's been properly and has been moved and properly seconded, and we will open it up for discussion. Before we do that, though, Commissioner, I'd like to recognize Representative Allison Dahl. I know you're going to, yeah.
Okay, I can do, I can do recognition first.
Okay, that'd be great.
Sure, yeah. I didn't know what order we were going in.
Welcome to these chambers, Representative.
Yeah. First, I'd like to, we are presenting this to the Harmony Chamber, which is the Chamber for the community that has taken a really active role in the last couple of years with our economic development folks. And I have Cade Kimber, their president, and I would like to present the proclamation to him, and he's going to say a few words, and then I think Representative Dahl's going to bring us home.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Chairman Hutchinson, fellow commissioners, and county manager Ellis. On behalf of Harmony, North Carolina's LGBT plus Allied Chamber of Commerce, as a small business owner and a longtime resident of Wake County, I thank you and I accept this Pride Month proclamation that helps highlight and acknowledge this significant month of observance, remembrance, and celebration for the LGBT plus community. As the official local affiliate of the National Gay and Lesbian Chamber of Commerce, or NGLCC, Harmony is responsible for the LGBT plus professional and business community in the eastern 50 counties of North Carolina. The western 50 are handled out of Charlotte. Our membership is comprised of LGBT plus and allied individual professionals, businesses of all sizes, nonprofits, and corporate partners and sponsors. Though Harmony is a sizable group with a 30-plus-year history in Wake County, we're also just a small portion of the estimated 250,000 LGBT plus workers and 400,000-plus LGBT residents of North Carolina. If I may be so presumptive, this evening, I'm going to speak for a moment on their behalf from my own viewpoint. I'm particularly speaking this evening on behalf of Remy Fennel and Jada Peterson, two transgender North Carolina women unable to celebrate Pride Month this year after being murdered last year simply for being who they are. It is on the collective behalf of all of these individuals, I humbly share with you these remarks and personal experiences. In a recent interview I did for a book being written about belonging in the workplace, I had the opportunity to reflect upon my own experiences and work experiences as a gay man. What quickly became apparent is just how fortunate I am to have had positive supportive workplace experiences ever since coming out over 15 years ago while living here in Raleigh and working here ever since. I have never been the victim of harassment at work due to my sexuality. I have never been the victim of assault in the workplace for being gay, and I have never been effectively forced to hide this component, this singular component, of my identity at work. In fact, quite the opposite. If the general public only knew just how rare my experience in avoiding all of that is, the majority would be absolutely appalled, and rightfully so. After all, we are in 2022, not 1822. To be honest, my work with Harmony, which requires me to openly identify so publicly as an LGBT plus individual, takes me well outside of my personal comfort zone, as is the case for most LGBT plus individuals. Though I am far from ashamed of who I am, to be clear, and I'm essentially an open book on top of that, my decision to lead Harmony, knowing it would make my sexuality a key focus and defining characteristic of me as a person, was something I wrestled with considerably. My sexuality, after all, is just a very small portion of what makes me me and how I would typically describe myself. I'm left-handed. I absolutely hate cucumbers. I am a major dog lover. To my nephews, I'm Uncle Cater Tot. My Dr. Claw and Marvin the Martian voice impersonations are pretty spot-on. I have celiac disease, and I dream about baked goods more than any person ever probably should. And by the way, I happen to be gay. But flipping that narrative and moving my sexuality to the forefront is against my nature. But I did so because I could. And I don't mean could in the general sense of just being capable. I mean, I could because I am fortunate to come from a very loving, supportive family that I'm pretty sure actually loves my longtime partner more than they love me. I could because I've been to hell and back to learn and get to where I could accept who I am despite wanting to be anything in the world but gay. In doing so, I not only earned the right to be able to speak about it firsthand, but also the responsibility to do so and reach back to pull forward others in an often unkind world. And I could, should, and ultimately would because others like Remy and Jada cannot. This is what led to my being here today, and I share all this certainly not to make this all about myself, but to put a real face and human voice on a community that isn't always seen or heard. I am but one person and story amongst hundreds of thousands across this great state and incredible county who have their own unique stories, all of which interweave to create the beautiful fabric of our community. It is a fabric not always welcomed or embraced, and honestly, it often gets ignored outside of the month of June. So Pride Month is more than just parades and festivals and even valued proclamations. It has much, much deeper meaning than that. I'm not oblivious to the fact that for some, Pride Month makes zero sense. I'm sure we've all heard the familiar refrain of, "Well, why don't we have straight parades?" Or, "Why don't we have a straight month if we have Pride Month?" Or, "I'm fine if somebody's gay so long as they don't shove it in my face." To that, I would say how much I look forward to joining you in that day when we don't need to have Pride Month or even an LGBT plus-focused Chamber of Commerce to advocate for an underserved yet vital part of the population and economy. But until that point in time, when people are not purposely discriminated against, assaulted, and even murdered because of who they are and who they innately love, Pride Month and LGBT plus-focused organizations such as Harmony must exist to provide the support, the awareness, and the community that LGBT plus individuals such as Commissioner Adamson's son need in order to fill that sense of belonging we deserve, the same as any other human being. As an aside, I would also tell those individuals that share those sentiments that if my 94-year-old uber Mormon grandma from rural Idaho can readily, freely, and excitedly accept that love is love, then so can anyone. It goes without saying that the state leaders that pushed through HB2 made a major misstep that continues to negatively impact the attraction of talent and business to this area to this very day, no matter how good it actually is. We now have HB 755 as our latest blight. Neither is ever going to be fully offset by the businesses and talented professionals that are coming to this area. There will forever be a deficit. In contrast, last October, this Board of Commissioners put in place a non-discrimination ordinance that, amongst other things, protects individuals from public and workplace discriminations because of their sexuality. I think it's important to note that this ordinance not only protects LGBT plus individuals, it protects heterosexual individuals to the exact same degree. And that is how it's done in Wake County, fairly and equally. We appreciate that so many communities in Wake County adopted the ordinance for themselves and look forward to the few community members that did not rectifying that as soon as possible because of the sheer disservice they're doing to the very people they were elected to serve of all the unknowns in the world. One thing we do know is that inclusion and fairness does not drive away business. It attracts it tenfold. The Board's vote this evening to adopt this proclamation is the latest of what I'm sure will be many forward-moving steps to come that let the greater business community know that Wake County does not support ideas and non-issues rooted in fear and sheer ignorance. Instead, it embraces every responsible, law-abiding citizen, and by so doing, only makes this county an even better place to live and work. I again thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson, fellow commissioners, and county manager Ellis, for not only understanding that all is in y'all, but that actions matter, words matter, and inclusion certainly matters. As some of our Harmony signage says, "You people are our kind of people." Happy Pride Month to each of you and to your son, Commissioner Adamson. Thank you for having me, for this meaningful proclamation, and for the time granted to speak to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was so well said. I so appreciate you being here. Now we have Representative Allison Dahl, Representative, welcome to these chambers.
Thank you so much. I'm very excited to see the Wake County Board of Commissioners acknowledge and celebrate pride. As a gay woman, this means much to me, and as a member of the larger LGBTQIA population, this symbolizes and conveys a message that we, the LGBTQIA folks of Wake County and North Carolina, have value and are valued by our elected officials in Wake County. As we move through June and continue to celebrate the LGBTQIA community in Wake County, North Carolina, and the United States, I would like us to celebrate our accomplishments. I want us to remember the past, take in the present, and dream about the future. We have a real future to dream about. We, the LGBTQIA population, have great value and have made great strides in our community to keep moving forward. I want us to focus on your voice, and I'm speaking to your voice behind me. Your voice is the most important voice, and your voice added to your neighbor's voice will bring much-needed change to our community. What is the best way for our collective voice to be heard? Vote. Let me repeat that. What is the best way for our collective voice to be heard? And that's vote. We must communicate to our entire community that their voice is important. We must ask people to make a plan to vote in every election. We must vote for candidates like our Wake County Board of Commissioners, who not only support LGBTQIA rights, but are willing to vote accordingly. We can no longer allow candidates to say they support our community and then bring legislation and laws that hurt us and our communities. By voting, we have changed the face of our government here in Wake County, and we can build on that until we see a North Carolina and even a United States that supports LBG, LBT, darn it, I thought I was going to make it through, LGBTQIA rights. Voting is the best way to convey our beliefs and the belief that we have for the future. I know, we're here to celebrate pride and commemorate pride, but I will remind you that without the voting of our forebearers, we would not be here celebrating. Please, take the time to celebrate, relish in the joy that is pride. But let us not forget those who are not here to celebrate pride. Let us remember those who came before us, and let us remember to support and help others vote so that our future is brighter than it is today. Thank you, Wake County Board of Commissioners, for the message you are sending to my community, the LGBTQIA community of Wake County and beyond.
Thank you, Representative Dahl.
You're welcome.
All right, Commissioners, other comments? Yes, please. Commissioner Savanya.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Adamson, for bringing this forward and to the community here to, to uplift the LGBTQIA community during this month and every day in the year. Your story about Gabe annoying at three years old, I have a story like that too, in that my best friend, one of my best friends was when I was in kindergarten. We knew, right? Like, you just know. And he was our best friend until grad school. Such an impactful person in our lives. To think at five years old, all of us, you can't deny, it's not a, it's, it's just purely love is love. It's not like a five-year-old's not there like about questioning his, like, people who are adults questioning his, what his sexual preference is. It's just about love. And so during these times that our kids are being very much through these bills and their families and parents having to try to understand what to do, we don't need a time like that right now. We ultimately have to remember that these are our loved ones, these are our friends, and I'm so happy that, that we're all here and you shared the story and that your son lets you have the story to give to the world. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments? Okay, hearing none, so.
Thank you, and I just wanted to say, if anybody wants flags, I brought flags.
Flags, okay.
If anybody would like flags.
All right.
Thank you.
Let me just say, Commissioner Adamson, thank you so much for your bravery in bringing this forward, and we want to celebrate Gabe and coming out tonight. This is a huge thing, and a huge thing for you.
Thank you, and I understand his special friend does drag, so I think my, my Christmases and Thanksgivings are no longer going to be boring. We're going to add color, which I'm very excited about because we have boring holidays.
That's great.
Thank you.
And let me just say, Representative Dahl and the other, the other folks who are here, thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your confidence. Thank you for your bravery. As I, my wife Nancy and I, one of our best friends, they had a, a young man who was in our youth group, and we knew he was gay and we loved him. And it made no difference to us who he was, you know, and one of the things that I, I mentioned to him is the best gift you can give yourself is to be yourself. And he is himself, and now he's married, and he and his husband live in New York City, and he has an incredibly rich, productive life, as you were speaking of. You know, this is who we are in Wake County. We embrace diversity, and we are stronger for it. So welcome, and thank you once again for your bravery. Dr. West, please.
Just, just something touched me, and I thought about what Senator Bill Bradley, who was also a Rhodes Scholar, said. He said, "Differences that divide us are self-defeating. Differences that bring us together are enhancing." And I know God is love, and he loves everybody. Keep the faith.
Thank you, Dr. West. So, members, we have a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Passes unanimously. Thank you all for being here. All right. Commissioners, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Please be reminded that any item on the consent agenda can be considered routine, but also any item can be removed from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda. That being said, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. West, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Passes unanimously. We'll now move on to public comment. We love to hear from our public, so we give you several ways to be able to communicate with the members of the commission. First, you can make a comment online, of which, just a moment, I'll ask Ms. Gilliard if anyone has signed up to, or signed up to, online to make those comments because we want to hear those. Second of all, you can also sign up online to speak at this meeting, of which I have a list of those people here. You can also go, come to the meeting and go to the back and sign up there. And then, if that's not enough for you, if you still want to say something, we'll give you a chance to speak after everyone has spoken. The process that we use is, is very consistent. As you come up, you'll have three minutes to speak. You'll see those three lights on the front of the podium. The green means that you have three minutes. The yellow means that you have one minute left. The red means that your time is up, and we treat everyone equally. So at the end of three minutes and the red light comes on, then I'll ask you to just finish your comments. Please remember that this is a public comment period, and we, as commissioners, do not respond to public comments. We want to hear from you, and we want to give you every opportunity to speak to this commission. All right, that being said, Ms. Gilliard, has anyone signed up that we need to hear about before we open it up to the people in the room?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Gilliard. All right, so the list of people that I have, I have six people, starting with Ms., I hope I get this right, I apologize, the print is very small, Ms. Arina Comer, Ms. Comer, are you here? And if you could, just tell us what part of the county you live in, that would be very helpful. Thank you, Ms. Comer, for being with us, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon and thank you. My name is Arina Comer. I live in Cary. I'm also a candidate for Wake County Commissioner from District Three in a countywide election. I read the Wake County recommended budget. While there are a lot of questionable decisions in that budget, one aspect is especially concerning, the fact that you want to give yourselves 132% raise this year to more than $66,000. This is incredibly imprudent as a fiscal matter. It is also remarkably tone deaf at a time when the real wages of so many people in this county are declining. Making the issue worse, you also want to get retirement benefits. Retirement benefits are generally reserved for careers, and the last thing we need is a set of career commissioners. While budget is already full of numbers, I want to add a few more numbers to the discussion. North Carolina legislators earn less than $14,000. The Raleigh mayor makes less than $28,000. A Raleigh city councilman takes home less than $20,000. And currently, Wake County Commissioner is paid a little more than $28,000. So as we can see, county commissioners already make more than, than state legislators, Raleigh mayor, and Raleigh city council members. The question is, what did you achieve to deserve a 132% raise? So let me add a few, a few more numbers and facts. You want to grow local government by adding more than 200 new positions, and every year that growing government will require more and more money to just sustain itself. You want to increase annual spending to $1.7 billion. And the only time you speak about savings is when you propose letting criminals out of jail based on a completed questionnaire. Otherwise, words such as "economy of scale" or "efficient systems" are not a vocabulary. At the same time, properties prices are growing, rent costs are increasing, we have the worst inflation in 40 years, and our cost of living is skyrocketing. But you still want more money for yourselves, more benefits, nice equivalent of pension, you know, career perks. But we've had enough of career politicians. What we need are public servants. So let me add the last pack to our discussion. How do you plan to finance this lucrative deal for yourself? You want to raise our taxes. Your budget proposes a tax increase from 60 cents to 61.5 cents per hundred dollars of valuation, which is an equivalent of 2.5% increase in taxes. And the issue will get only worse in a couple of years when properties are reassessed and increased property values are taken into account. So on behalf of my neighbors, friends, and county residents, I'm here to tell you now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Comer. Next, we have Ms. Africa Williams, followed by Stephanie Arnold Workman, and then Counselor Steve Row. Ms. Williams, are you in the, the hall? Oh, welcome. Glad to have you with us.
Thank you. First, thank you all for the time today to come in and speak. I wanted to just briefly talk about something that is important to me and I think should be important to our community. I have a son who is on autism spectrum, and he also has a comorbid, serious mental illness. On April 12th, I took him to Wake Med Hospital Emergency Room because he was in crisis. And my son was ultimately denied treatment originally, and then eventually assaulted by one of the Wake Med police officers in front of me. He was punched in the face. I was very distraught about it, upset, and tried to reason with and deal with Wake Med, and that has been fairly unsuccessful. While I think they heard me on some, some level, I don't think they've really addressed it in the way that it needs to be addressed. But the reason why I'm here today is because not being able to sleep three days, two or three nights later, I read and I was on the internet researching Wake Med and what their previous issues were with treating people who have mental illness. And I found an article from Raleigh News-11 that said, "A growing mental health crisis affecting more families and children in Wake County is prompting a hospital to take new action. Wake Med is asking the surrounding communities to provide funding to assist them in building a 50-bed mental health hospital." I want to make note and go on record, as a parent, as a mental health advocate, as someone who served at the Department of Veterans Affairs Headquarters, and understands patient safety, hospital administration, that this is not okay. And I just want to make the public aware and go on record to say that if Wake Med can abuse patients during Autism Awareness Month, who come into their hospital with autism, one month prior to Mental Health Awareness Month, who come into their hospital in crisis and for treatment, then I don't think that they need funding from Wake County to support them building a 50-bed hospital. Because if they don't know how to abuse, to treat the patients that they currently have, I don't see that we need to provide funds for Wake Med to get additional funding to build a mental health facility. And there are other facilities in this area that are more equipped and better prepared to provide services, support, to... support to families and individuals with autism and other mental health challenges. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we'll hear from Stephanie Arnold Workman. Ms. Workman, are you in the room? Okay, hearing that Ms. Workman is not here. Counselor Steve Rau, welcome, Counselor. Glad to have you with us, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Hutchinson, Vice Chair Thomas, and the County Commission. First of all, I want to wish everybody a happy D-Day. We'll never forget our greatest generation who gave us freedom, and we must honor them by fighting for freedom and justice, equality for all, the same things that they fought and died for, for our nation. I want to wish everyone a happy Pride Month, and I will also tell you that we're very excited in Morrisville about a new high school. I want to thank Scott Rawls and the county for being so supportive to have a first public high school. I want to spend the rest of my minutes talking about the 10-year anniversary of the Deferred Action for Child Arrival Program, or DACA, which resulted in over 830,000 young children who came here, you know, with their parents. And there's about 35,000 in North Carolina, producing about 484 million in our economy in North Carolina. But many of these dreamers are documented dreamers. There's about 250,000 in the United States, and many of them are in Wake County, North Carolina. There's about, basically, many of them are the children of H-1B visa holders. H-1B is the skilled visa program that's provided by our Immigration Service. Many are from India, and they come here to fill the jobs of our tech economy. They've been the backbone of data analytics, innovation in our research and our universities. But today, their children are aging out because their children came here with their parents who came here legally, and now they're aging out. In Morrisville, I can tell you that I'm hearing stories of people who are being deported back to their country, India. They're asked that they have to separate the families, and it's very, really hard. I just wanted to bring this to your attention because we often forget the economic contributions of immigrants, and I'll end with a story. So, there's Shrasti Sharma, who's a documented dreamer, a UNC student. She's working on an app that could one day allow us to diagnose Alzheimer's disease through a fitness tracker. And she's being told by the United States Government that she has to go back to her country, and she'll be separated from her family. I can't tell you enough how many of these stories that we're hearing every day. I can tell you that many of them are from the nation of India, which is 55% of our population in Morrisville, and about 55% of these tech industry in STEM is from foreign-born immigrants, many from India, about 35% of our software development. So, why does this concern me? Because I believe it's going to hurt our innovation if people, parents, leave to go back to their countries. That's less talent, less jobs in the pipeline here. If these dreamers go back, it's going to be bad for our economy, and also, they're paying higher rates of in-state tuition. What can we do about it? Well, county commissioners, there's not much you can do other than voice your concerns through our congressional delegation. I fully support Congresswoman Deborah Ross and other congress leaders I've been working with in Washington to accelerate the passage of the American Citizenship Act, which provide accelerated citizenship to these documented dreamers. I think we're very blessed to have them dreaming the dream here in Wake County and in the great state of North Carolina. For more information, you can go to my blog on WRL Tech Wire, where I write every week for WRL.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you for your service. Right on the money.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you being with us every time you're here.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Ms. T.B. Bachmann, followed by Donna Williams. Mr. and Ms. Bachmann, are you in the hall? Okay, Donna Williams. Ms. Williams, welcome.
Hello, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. I, too, am here to talk about the pay raise that you all are asking for, and similar concerns as to the previous speaker, so I will try not to repeat what she said. But I do think to go from $28,588 to $66,000 is a huge raise in pay. And with what we, as citizens, are dealing with right now, in this, in our county, in our state, in our country, between gas prices and food prices, just life, everything in life is going up. So, for you to get these raises, that means our taxes have to go up. And I also did my homework, and I did compare what our state legislators are paid. Yes, it's about $14,000 a year. Then they get a stipend. It's $104 a day for their food and a hotel or apartment or whatever. When you think about it, 100 counties are represented, and so, that's all. Most of our legislators do not live in Wake County. So, really, when you add in their stipend, they are earning between $30,000 and $40,000 a year, but how much of that do they have to pay to actually come here and serve us? And the other thing I looked at was our police officers in Raleigh. They are paid anywhere from $41,000 a year to $54,000 a year, and they are putting their lives on the line every single day that they go to work. I don't think that the commissioners are doing that, with all due respect. I appreciate what you do for our county, but I'm trying to compare this in my mind to other people who serve us in this county. And I'm trying to compare this to what's happening in real life, in real time, with every single family. Every family is hurting right now financially. And so, to me, for county commissioners who are elected officials, that your job is to serve this community, I ask you, please, think about the citizens of Wake County and what they are making. And lastly, I will just say that the average, average citizen of North Carolina makes $31,000 a year. So, you are asking for a pay raise of double that? I'm sorry, in my mind, that's just wrong. That is hurtful to the citizens of this county. It's unfair, and it's unjust. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Appreciate your comments. That is everyone on my list. Is there anyone in the room that would care? Please, come on down. Great, if you'd just give us your name and what part of the county you live in, it'd be great.
Hello, Chad Stahl from Raleigh. Hi, everybody. Just real quick, I pulled the top 1,000 paid positions from Wake County Public School System, and then averaged those salaries. So, I took out the $329,000 that we pay to our superintendent, so that would not get factored into the average. But the top 1,000 positions, which is roughly 5%, average salary is around $96,000 a year. So, out of that, about 5%, maybe 100 of those actually have the word "teacher" attached to their job title. So, top 1,000 jobs, $96,000 a year, 100 of those are actually in classrooms. The other 90% are somewhere else, central office, working on reports or whatever. But I just thought that was an interesting statistic because, you know, there's always the, you know, the kids can't wait, the kids can't wait, but the majority of the salary doesn't go into the classroom. It does not go to the teacher. So, I'm just kind of confused of the messaging a little bit. And then I have a, this question has been on my mind, and I've been trying to figure out how to ask it. In the ordinance that you guys signed in last year, protected classes covered under the ordinance include race, national hair or hairstyles, ethnicity, creed, color, sex, pregnancy, marital or familial status, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, national origin or ancestry, National Guard or veteran status, religious belief or non-belief, age or disability. And then I think, okay, that's fantastic. So, on one hand, you write this great ordinance that says, hey, we need to acknowledge discrimination is still a thing, it's still happening. But then, with the other hand, you pin an increase for taxes. And I'm wondering, out of the list there, how many of those single mothers are not going to be able to afford the tax increase or your salaries when you write that into policy? How many veterans that are not going to get any more money are not going to be able to afford their rent, but you're going to get 132% raise? How many individuals with a disability that are not going to be able to work to keep up with the demand that you're going to put on them? So, are you really, so, in one hand, you're telling us, hey, you can't discriminate. But then, with the other hand, you're going to say, but we can, and we're going to, and we're going to tax the crap out of them, and it doesn't matter who we hurt doing it. I think you should really think about that, and I don't think it's right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Stahl. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please, join us up front. If you can give us your name and what part of the county you live in, it'd be great.
Hi, my name's Kim Mackey. I live in Fuquay Varina. I'm also a Wake County Public School teacher and proud parent of two Wake County Public School students. I'm asking you again to fully fund the WCPSS budget request. It's been a lot of conversation about asking for more, but the context of the numbers show that our community at the local level is still working on restoring what we used to do. When my current students, who are seniors about to graduate, go class of 2022, when they were in kindergarten, our local community gave $325 more per student in purchasing power. So, I think that's just really important context as folks talk about, we're doing more, we're doing more. Why are you asking for more? We're still asking for the same that students 15 years ago got, and I think my students deserve that same support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Appreciate you being here. Is there anyone else in this room that would like to speak? Please, join us down front. If you give us your name and what part of the county you live in, that'd be great.
Thanks, Chair Hutchinson. I'm Christina Spears. I'm representing Wake NCAE as Vice President and President-elect, the local affiliate of the North Carolina Association of Educators and National Education Association. I'm a special ed teacher by trade and currently serving in our district's Office of Equity Affairs. First, I want to say thank you for your proclamations this evening regarding Bitlago Awareness Month and Pride Month. Last time I addressed this board, I referenced how you have the opportunity to use your power to move towards social justice. Your proclamations tonight demonstrate your commitment to working toward justice for all folks, regardless of skin color, gender, and sexual orientation. So, thank you. And as Gabe's former youth mentor, hearing his story tonight really touched my heart. So, thank you for that, Ms. Adamson. So, Wake NCAE, including educators, parents, and students, have been clear that our students deserve a fully-funded school system. We have also been clear that students' learning conditions are our working conditions. Every worker in Wake County, both county staff and district staff, deserve a living wage. We know that you value equitable compensation for public workers, as reflected in the minimum wage that's proposed in this budget. It's critical that the budget you pass tonight reflects those values, including for our education support professionals, who deserve at least $16 an hour in this budget. In attending your work sessions, I'm grateful for your willingness to dig in and ask tough questions toward closing that $18 million gap in the district's ask and the county manager's proposal. It's evident that you desire to work collaboratively with district staff to fully fund WCPSS, both this year and in the future, particularly with regard to employee compensation. I understand how difficult that can be when the state may make your jobs even harder, not following through with adequate funding at the state level. So, this evening, as you cast your votes, I hope you provide Wake County enough funds for employee compensation to pay our non-certified staff at least the $16 an hour that they deserve. Thank you for your time, labor, and consideration. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you for being with us. Is there anyone else in this room who would care to speak to this commission? Please, join us down front. Once again, if you could just give us your name for the record, that'd be great.
Good evening. My name is Darren Eustance from Raleigh. I'm going to give you a little bit of unexpected but qualified sympathy in regards to your request for a pay raise. I, too, have once had a job that was all volunteer. It was supposed to be part-time, and turned out to be anything but. Turned out to be a full-time plus job. So, I know how difficult it is to have a job like that and balance your real job, which actually pays you, and your family obligations, and your personal life. So, I've been where you are, and I do sympathize. But if you insist on going through with this and raising your pay, I'm here to tell you that I, the taxpayer, am your employer, and I am a hard-driving boss. If you do this, I expect you, if you want a full-time salary, to work a full-time job. At the end of each month, each one of you should submit publicly a monthly report detailing how many hours you worked. You should detail the specific tasks that you worked on. If you did not work a 40-hour week, you don't deserve full-time pay, and I expect you to give some of that money back. That being said, it's my opinion that you don't deserve this raise for many of the reasons expressed by speakers before me. But I'll tell you that you've let the school board run rampant over parents. You've allowed Wake County to become a nanny state en masse. Mask mandates lasted longer than New York and New Jersey here in Wake County. And while talking about how unfortunate it is that Wake County is becoming more unaffordable to residents, this is going to be your sixth tax increase in eight years. I'm also going to say one thing. You published a report comparing yourselves to other counties and those commissioners, and how much they're paid. Well, let me tell you something. Collin County, Texas, in your report, full-time county executive with four commissioners, elected by district. Fresno County, California, five members, elected by district. Fulton County, Georgia, seven members, six of them elected by district. The chair is elected countywide. Hennepin County, Minnesota, seven-member commission, elected by district. Pima County, Arizona, five-member board, elected by district. And in researching that, I discovered that their Board of Supervisors is set to lower their tax rate for the fifth straight year. So, if you're going to emulate them, I wish you'd consider that instead. If you don't want to work that hard, maybe it's time to split yourself up and run by district. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in this room who would care to speak to this commission? Hearing none, then we'll close the public comment period. Once again, we appreciate hearing from everyone tonight, as we always do. Members, the next item on the regular agenda is a petition for property owners to preserve the Long Branch Farm subdivision, requesting county financing by special assessment to improve subdivision roads for the acceptance into the NC Department of Transportation Maintenance Highway system. Mr. Terry Nolan. Oh, Ms. Nolan. Welcome.
Hello, welcome. Thank you for having me, Commissioners. Before you tonight is a petition for upfront financing to repair the roads at this subdivision, to get them adopted into the state-maintained system. This item is before you because the developer failed to do this. They failed to get the roads into the state-maintained system. The DOT will not accept roads into the system unless they are brought up to standard. The county has a policy regarding not only road improvements like this, but also covers other infrastructure projects like private water systems that have failed and private sewer systems that have failed. This policy dictates what types of projects the county might provide financing to, and how to go about this process. And that policy is in line with state law regarding this. The Preserve at Long Branch Farm subdivision is 41 lots. It's basically two streets. All of, both streets are orphaned, and they need to be repaired before they can be accepted by NC DOT. We have been working with this community for a number of years. The community circulated the petition and submitted it in March of this year. Like I said, it includes both roads. 31 of 41 property owners signed the petition, which exceeds the required 75%. Per state law, 75% of property owners and 75% of the lineal footage. Both of those have to be met, and this petition does meet that. Here are a couple of photos from the subdivision. The road is looking pretty worn and is in disrepair. There are also a lot of drainage issues related to the ditches, and that is part of the right-of-way and will need to be addressed. The project cost estimate, the original estimate was actually funded by the community. Their HOA hired an engineering firm to develop an estimate. That estimate was a few years old, so our staff That estimate was a few years old, so our staff adjusted that estimate to $550,000. That is a very conservative estimate. We will work to try and get the actual project under that. The financing terms, it would be a five-year payback, approximately $2,700 per year for, and if someone paid the total loan amount upfront after the project is completed, it would be about $12,700. If they went with a financing option, the total that someone would pay would be $13,500. The total project cost is spread equally amongst all the property owners. That assessment does not start until the project is completed. At the very end, once all the bills are paid, that is when the property assessment begins. Like I said, they can pay the assessment upfront after the project is complete, or they can finance it over that five-year term. The assessments are attached to the land, and so that would transfer to a new property owner if the property is sold. And our policy does allow for financial hardship, so someone who is experiencing hardship can work with our staff to work out a different kind of payment arrangement. If you approve this project, we will begin immediately with the, with the design of the project. We would basically manage it like any other capital project we have, the libraries that we build, the parks that we develop. We would just treat it like that. We would work with the DOT until the roads are completed and up to standard, and we would turn the roads over to DOT, and those roads would then be in perpetual maintenance by the state. At the end of that project, we would bring this back to you to set the assessment. That also includes a public hearing. And then after the assessment, the final assessment is set, then we would turn that over to tax administration to start collecting the assessments. Staff findings, this project meets the petition requirements. It meets the, the state requirements for providing this type of financing. It also meets the county's policy. There really aren't alternative solutions for this community for them to fund it themselves. The county has already adopted the preliminary assessment resolution that basically said, that set the public hearing for tonight and sort of set out the terms of this project. And then for today's public hearing, letters were sent, information from the HOA was also circulated via email, and of course, it was published in the paper. And the county does have revenues in reserve in order to fund this.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan. Any questions for Ms. Nolan before we open the public comment?
Mr. Hutchinson.
Dr. West, please.
I know this has been a standard process, and it's a good process, but what are the trends when developer reneges, or whatever the right terminology is? Where are the trends going? Is this going down? Are there some remedies that can be enacted in some way that we're not going in the wrong direction?
Well, I don't have data on trends. I know that many of our orphan road communities sort of occurred during the 2008 recession. But that also, you know, so we're seeing a lot of communities that are starting to come due for road repair. So we're getting a lot of contacts that way. We are also working with legislative staff to work out, you know, are there some legislative solutions to help prevent this from happening in the future, as well as some programmatic things that the DOT can change to either prevent it from happening in the future or to make it easier, the process easier, to get these roads into the state-maintained system?
Well, that's, that's kind of what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. West. Any other questions for staff?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify for those who may be watching and haven't been through this before, that this is necessitated, I believe, by a change in the law that the General Assembly made in, what was it, 2011, 2012, somewhere around there. Before that, a bond was required so that builders couldn't just abscond and not finish the roads. But when that requirement was removed, we ended up having a lot of roads that weren't brought up to code and weren't turned over to DOT and subsequently haven't been able to be sued or tracked down or anything like that. And so we had to make a hard choice about whether we leave neighborhoods in alert, trying to pay sums that they really can't pay all at once to try to repair their roads, or to provide low or no-interest loans to help them get back to DOT standard, turn it over to DOT, and have those roads maintained in perpetuity. And we only do this where the neighbor, the neighborhood, as determined by petitions, tells us, yes, we want to participate in this. And we only do this through a program that allows us to provide a specialist's assessment to pay Wake County back over a period of years. And so I just wanted to point that out. Really, this is us stepping in for an unfortunate change in state law that's really left a lot of our homeowners in a lurch, but I think that's important context.
Thank you, Commissioner Calabria. And that's very important to say that this, this is a revolving fund of which the county gets this money back, and it's just a service to the citizens as a result of a change in the General Assembly, basically what you said, Commissioner. All right, any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. At this point, we'll open the public hearing. Ms. Gilliard, has anyone sent any comments regarding this issue before we open up to the people in the room?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gilliard. Is there anyone in this room who would care to speak to this issue? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, assist back to the table for any action you would care to do.
I'm happy to make the motion.
Please, Commissioner.
There are two items listed. Do they need to be in separate motions or one?
No, Commissioner. Just, just having held a public hearing, could all in one motion. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Commissioners, having held a public hearing, to consider the petition from property owners in the Preserve at Long Branch Farm subdivision and the preliminary assessment resolution adopted on May 2, 2022, for county financing by special assessment to improve the subdivision roads for acceptance into the North Carolina Department of Transportation maintained highway system, and that the Board adopts the final assessment resolution directing the project be undertaken and appropriate $520,652 to the Water, Sewer, and Road Improvements Division of the Economic Development Element within the County Capital Fund to increase the available budget for road improvements.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second about Commissioner Calabria. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? No? Pese unanimously. Thank you, Commissioners. We'll move on to item number 28, which is the adoption of fiscal year 2023 operating budget, capital improvement projects, special revenue projects, and personnel authorization ordinances. Mr. Ellis, welcome. Oh, Michelle, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. So tonight, I will be providing highlights of the manager's recommended budget as revised on May 23. Manager Ellis presented his budget on May 2, which was followed by a Capitol and operating work session and three days of public meetings. The manager's revised budget is $1,708,771,000. It includes a 1.5 cent tax increase, bringing the property tax rate to 61.5 cents. The manager's budget addresses population growth, inflation, affordable housing shortage, impacts of a tight labor market, and rising demand for our services. The budget is revised by these items that were presented at the May 23 work session. One subsequent adjustment was an increase to the use of fund balance for the Familiar Faces pilot that is carrying over for FY '23 for a full contraction of that program. That would be the one difference from what you saw on May 23. The expenditure changes are supported by revenues for the Wake Brook Familiar Faces and Alliance projects of Behavioral Health Fund balance. And then the large proportion of expenditures are offset by reduction in the manager's budget for Beach Bluff Park, as we will need to delay that project, and then additionally, Smart Start had decreased their request. Adjustments from the recommended to revised budget are reflected here for other funds from the May 23 work session. All adjustments are in federal revenue except for the Corporate Fleet Fund, which is supporting transfers and one-time funding to purchase vehicles for this year's budget. This final slide reflects, reflects the budget as revised for each of the county ordinances for which you will consider for approval tonight. And with that, I will open it for your discussion and any discussion about adopting this year's budget.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, in terms of a process, what I would offer, if, is, any questions specifically for Michelle? We'll take those. Then I understand that there is a motion to be considered. If that motion is made, then we'll make a second, and then we'll open it up for any discussion between Commissioners or additional questions, followed by a vote. Is that an acceptable process? Okay, great. So are there any questions specifically for Michelle? Okay, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chair, as you mentioned in the service of getting our conversation started, I'll go ahead and read a motion into the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Calabria.
And for those who have not sat through one of these before, it is very long. Staff has confirmed that I do, in fact, have to read the whole thing, so please bear with us. Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopts the following fiscal year 2023 budget-related ordinances. Operating budgets funds ordinances. General Fund Annual Operating Budget. Debt Service Fund Annual Operating Budget. Fire Tax District Fund Annual Operating Budget. Major Facilities Fund Annual Operating Budget. Solid Waste Operating Fund Annual Operating Budget. South Wake Landfill Partnership Fund Annual Operating Budget. Corporate Fleet Fund Annual Operating Budget. Health and Dental Fund Operating Budget. Human Services Transportation Fund Annual Operating Budget. Wake County Public School System Fines and Forfeitures Fund Operating Budget. Human Services Client Trust Fund Annual Operating Budget. Capital Improvement Projects Funds Ordinance inclusive of County Capital Projects Fund, Fire Tax District Capital Projects Fund, Major Facilities Capital Projects Fund, Solid Waste Capital Projects Fund, Housing Capital Projects Fund, Wake Tech Community College Capital Projects Fund, Wake County Public School System Capital Projects Fund. Special Revenue Project Ordinances. Housing Affordability and Community Revitalization Fund Project Ordinance. Capital Area Workforce Development Fund Project Ordinance. Grants and Donations Fund Project Ordinance. Position Authorization Classification and Compensation Ordinance, as amended by the following. That the Board of Commissioners amends the county manager's recommended fiscal year 2023 budget as revised, as revised at the May 23 work session and reflected in the presented ordinances to include the following adjustments. Increase of $12 million to the Wake County Public School System for a total increase over fiscal year 2022 of $50 million resulting in an operating appropriation of $594,253,045. And increase of $40,000 to Universal School Breakfast Program resulting in an operating appropriation of $308,320 to be funded through an increase of $8,750,000 in property tax revenue, which requires an increase of .45 cents to the county manager's recommended property tax rate for a total tax rate of 61.95 cents per $100 of property tax valuation. A $2 million decrease in transfers to the Affordable Housing Development Program and a 1.2, a $1,290,000 decrease in county operating expenditures accomplished through the delay in hiring positions added with the fiscal year 23, 2023 budget for a resulting total general fund appropriation of $1,717,521,000 and total housing capital improvement plan of $13 million.
I'll second.
It's been moved improperly second. We'll now open the floor for any comments or discussion, Commissioners. Commissioner Evans?
I just want to acknowledge the staff and all their hard work and the manager on this budget, and I also want to acknowledge their willingness to work with the Commissioners throughout the past week and for our willing to be collaborative and try to reach consensus on a final amended budget. I'm pleased with what is being proposed before us tonight. Just wanted to highlight a few things. Certainly appreciate that the manager's budget largely focused on how we support our employees, how we improve compensation, and how we can do the best to retain and attract the best employees to Wake County in this ever-increasing tight labor market. That's very, very important. It also included expansions in certain departments where it's desperately needed and highlighted in the emergency management area, libraries, health and human services, and so forth. But I also appreciate the manager and his staff being willing to work with us to try to reach a compromise so that we could do the best we possibly could with funding the Wake County Public School System request, because it was very important to many of us that the Wake County Public School System is also able to pay all of their employees a decent wage that will allow them to retain staff, primarily bus drivers, cafeteria workers, support staff, that are so desperately needed to create stability for our classrooms. And so we worked very hard to reach some compromises to allow us to eventually agree to increase the funding for the school district by $50 billion for this year. And there's no greater investment we can make than investing in our children's futures. And so I, while this isn't the amount that was the full amount that the school district requested, I hope that it is received and, and understood that this commission has the shared values of our school district, and we are passionate about trying to do the best we can there in every way and trying to have effective learning environments for our students. Lastly, I just wanted to touch on this delicate subject of the Commissioners' proposed increased What, what was publicized in the media in the last several weeks was the result of a very preliminary conversation in a committee meeting where we had vetted some possible scenarios for improving our compensation. It's, and, and for any of you who watched the video from the Great Government Committee meeting or saw any of the quotes in the news stories, initially, you'll know that I was one of the Commissioners that, that pushed for a more moderate increase than what was being discussed by some of the colleagues at that time. And so while we didn't really highlight this for the community, and in hindsight, I suppose we should have in recent weeks, we continued to have discussions behind the scenes, and we, we are not giving ourselves a 132% increase. In fact, where we landed with our increase for salary and expense allowances combined is an increase of less than 50% of what was being discussed in that very preliminary stage, and this does not include, include any money for retirement benefits. So I just wanted to speak on that matter to be clear on, on where we landed. What was being publicized was a very preliminary conversation, but when we finalized everything, we certainly landed in a different place. But we appreciate the community's feedback, and I look forward to supporting this budget tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Hutchinson? Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Dr. West, please.
Yes, I would like to just kind of reiterate what Commissioner Evans just stated. This was not an easy budget. These are not easy times. There are hard choices that have to be made. And just reflecting on my belief system, I do feel that we are public servants and our stakeholders, our customers, and taxpayers are our first priority. When you sit in this seat, I learned that really coming to a good conclusion is called the art of compromise. And that's kind of what we did. We went through the art of compromise, looking at... We went through the art of compromise, looking at all the competing needs right on down the line. But also, I think it's very important that we adjust to the situation that we are in, looking at previous budgets, I think the six years we asked for increases, in particular for the public school system, because it was years when the first item on the agenda, I may be the oldest rat in the barn here, Mr. Hutchinson, but that's okay too. That process, the first item was no tax increase. We talk about the growth and the opportunities and especially focusing on vulnerable communities, and I'm very pleased because I pushed that particular piece through during the time of no tax increases. And I think we want to have a county where all people will have some opportunities. Someone said that in every exchange, there's a cost, so there is a cost, but keeping taxpayers and people discounted first and our priority. One thing that I'm particularly interested in, that one thing that swayed me to some degree with the budget is what was mentioned related to the certified workers. I may have broke protocol, but I talked to some certified workers and listened to their story and the plight that many of them are in at this particular time. And I don't apologize because those folks that are not making livable wage, I think a few months back or so, they were making like $11 and something per hour, and that's just is not right. So that's one of the things. And I felt if it was taking a chance, taking some risks, I don't mind taking that risk because if you don't stand for something, you will fall for anything. And all the issues related to looking at the number of people that have been evicted, housing needs, and trying to make these trade-offs are not, are very, very difficult. And the issue of salary, I said this before, that I consider myself as a public servant, and I think that the people that we represent should be on top, and we should be on tap. But trends do change, and there are a lot of competing interests. And as Commissioner Evans said, we did find a much lower level as it relates to that particular issue, but you have to have an accurate picture of the whole reality in terms of the demands on county commissioners and the things that we are trying to do compared with some of the things in the past. But I guess I'm just saying all this to say that trying to use this balancing act that we have, looking at upward mobility, 100,000 people added below, the poverty era being pushed out, gentrified, and being displaced, and trying to make sure that we balance all of this and still have a world-class organization with AAA rating right on down the line. But I could go on and on and on, but that's just my sentiment and where I stand, and I do support this budget. I watch staff. Amazing the work that they've had to do to juggle all these different pieces to come up with a budget that we have come up with. And I'd like to give kudos to my manager for his job and where we are at this point.
Thank you, Dr. West. Appreciate those comments. Commissioners, please. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Yeah, for the audience, this is our budget. So it's like creating the great American novel. And literally, there will be staff working on it again in, what, David, September? It's literally a year-round process, and this is a culmination of it. And I think this is the most important thing we do all year, because I've always said, if you want to see somebody's value system, look at their checkbook. And that's how you tell what our value system is, is how we spend taxpayer money. And I am really pleased with this budget. It's been a difficult budget. There's been a lot of competing needs, but I believe what we have created is our community's priorities. And we are investing in our county employees, mental health care, housing, veteran services, because when veterans come home, they don't come home to federal programs, they come home to their community, and that's us. And they need us right now. We're putting a little over $5 million in sustainability projects, solar, you know, to try to get us carbon neutral. So I'm really pleased with these investments. I do feel like I do wish we could have done more for sheriff's deputies. I know our other emergency medical folks and our firemen, we've done a lot for them. I do hope we'll keep our eye on that going forward and going this year and monitor that. But unfortunately, we can't do everything. And I am really excited about investing an extra $50 million in public education. Because as Dr. West always says, you pay now or you pay later. And right now, our children need us more than ever, because the pandemic has been hard on us, but it's been hard on them as well. So, and this should hopefully bring staff up to a minimum of $16 an hour. I know this falls a little short of the county livable wage of $1,820,000, but it's a step in the right direction. We talk a lot about sustainability in the commission and in our work, and realistically, the Wake County school bus system is our largest public transportation system we have in this county. And I tried to find out how many kids they transport on a day, but that number was not easily available, but it's a lot of buses out there. And with the current bus driver shortage, that means routes are longer. And if for some reason a driver is unable to drive that day, there's not always a substitute. And if one of our goals is to get cars off the road, parents with means, when the bus is not convenient, we'll be driving their kids to school. And of course, if the bus doesn't show up, or it's erratic in the morning with what time it picks kids up, you know, unfortunately, our more vulnerable children, if they miss the bus, they don't always have a way to get to school, and those do add up. So I hope we will keep monitoring with our school board partners what we can do to help with those bus drivers and get kids moving again and get cars off the street. And one of the things, actually, we talked about it today, we had a economic, one of our economic committee meetings this afternoon, and one of the things we're talking about doing is putting a program in place for employers that pay a livable wage. And there's some system where they can attest that they pay a livable wage, they get a certificate for their building. And I look forward to the day when we walk in every school in this county and that certificate is in the front office, that all those school system employees are paid what we consider a livable wage. So I'm honored to support this budget, but it's like all budgets, there's always a lot of work left to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments? Yes, Commissioner Savanya.
So I don't want to reiterate what my colleagues have had to say. I do agree with every word and sentiment they have expressed. I do actually want to express something that has not been expressed, and through this whole process, even beforehand, I want to let the public know that you've been heard. And in so many ways, there had been, I had expressed, our same team is competing for different sentiments that I would think would be our decision points. So it was very difficult. You know, we want to fully fund schools, we know it's important, you know, I'm Chair of Economic Development, and the first thing businesses ask us when they want to move here is, how's your public school system? And it's the best, right? And we want to keep it that way. At the same time, a month beforehand, one wake came, representing many of our seniors, our marginalized communities, who $150 of an increased tax before the reappraisal in a couple of years is going to be tough. So no, and many people think that we take this very lightly, and we don't. I do want to also express that, you know, as some people say, it's a broken record for me about language access, and a few of our community people did come in, and I want people to know from those, the communities, that they are heard. It wasn't adopted in this budget, but know that we're going to keep fighting for language access and having 22% of our population who's not fully engaged now to be engaged. I also have been impressed by the process too that I hadn't seen. This is when, like, this is the first year we raised taxes during my tenure. Last year was an easy process, but it's been such a great process to work with our school board system, our, the administration, and the school board members in knowing that this was going to be a difficult decision. And our board, because we weren't all on the same page. We weren't in the same place after County Manager Ellis presented his budget, but we came to a point where we did come to an agreement, and I think we're relatively happy that we're coming into this together with an agreed-upon vote. So I thank you to my colleagues, I thank the public, and I thank all the advocates who always will be heard. There's a few of you who call me on a Sunday or whatever, know that we, most of us, had gotten that too. Know we're here to fight for you and every child, every senior, and know that it is exemplified in this budget. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, Vice Chair.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to add to my colleagues' sentiments. No year doing this budget is easy. I think it was, might have been easier a little bit, maybe, last year, but last year was also my first year, so that's relative. And although it's public perception that we've raised property taxes every year, I just want to remind people that we have not, that this increase is the first in three years. And municipalities may have raised taxes, and so that's what people really see in their tax bills, but we have not. And even this, this was not the primary preference of this board at this time. We understand, we see gas prices, we go to the pump, we've been at the grocery store, we hear, you know, some of us have new grandbabies. We know about infant formula shortages, and we understand what's going on, we're not immune to that. But it's necessary. It's necessary to continue to recruit and retain people and programs and services that make this place, Wake County, a place that we all want to live and work and raise our families. And I am hopeful, like my colleagues, that this significant increase to the manager's recommended budget for the Wake County Public Schools will allow for a minimum of $16 an hour for support professionals. That's important to us, and that's one of the reasons that we really went back and forth trying to decide what we could do. And I also want to say that even in all of that, I am personally disappointed that there's a $2 million decrease in transfers to the Affordable Housing Development Program, because I understand how important affordable housing is, but there are compromises and sacrifices that have to be made in order to come up with a balanced budget, and these decisions are not easy. And so I just wanted to echo those sentiments of my colleagues and also say on the record that these decisions are not easy, but we still feel like we've made the best decisions for the county moving forward, and that we have put our own oxygen mask on first, and also that, you know, we're happy to be one of the fastest-growing counties in the country, and we want to keep pace with that and do it well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Like my colleagues, I want to start out by thanking the county manager and all of our staff for what we've come to learn as an absolutely grueling annual process in putting this together, which involves a whole lot of tough choices and really balancing the considerations and the welfare and the perspectives of everyone in the community. One of the things that became very clear to me is that while we are all talking about the new normal or returning to normal, how abnormal a time this still is. We are looking at labor shortages that are really forcing employers to increase compensation just to stay in competition for talent. We're seeing escalating numbers of 911 calls. I'm looking at you, Dr. Cabanas. We're seeing rising levels of gun violence, increased housing costs, increased costs at the pump, and so many other things. Those are just a few. In the meantime, growth continues to be the defining characteristic of Wake County, which I think dictates vigilance for us, because we've got to continue to be mindful that we don't want to get behind when it comes to building infrastructure, putting new schools on the ground, renovating schools, making sure that we have the amenities in place to, as the chair sometimes says, not just grow and maintain our quality of life, but grow and improve our quality of life as we move forward in time. I support this budget as amended for a number of reasons, and I just wanted to highlight a few of them. First, the budget allocates $4 million more toward the construction of new affordable housing. And I should clarify, as Commissioner Thomas, Vice Chair Thomas pointed out, that's $2 million in recurring funding, $2 million in what will, in a couple of weeks when we vote on it, will be an additional $4, $2 million in one-time funding. But I am appreciative of the increase that we're able to accomplish there. With this budget, we're going to continue to work on preserving farmland in ways that we've never before. We're opening a new county park, we're preserving 7,500 new acres of natural land. And regarding public safety, I'm Chair of the Public Safety Committee, we're going to be replacing standard safety equipment such as bulletproof vests and upgrading our 911 system to keep our deputies and our residents safe, while also adding more nurses in the jail to protect detainees and deputies alike. We're also funding for the first time the implementation of a public safety assessment tool that will help us prioritize supportive services for people who are being detained in our jails, and we're going to be applying a more objective system that I believe will help prevent us from detaining those for whom detention is not warranted. As is often the case in Wake County, children are the greatest beneficiaries of this year's budget. We're adding human services positions to offer family planning, prenatal care, child health care. We're funding the opening of four new schools. We're adding school nurses and school-based mental health care providers to address the rising numbers of youth suicides, and we know that that has been an increasing problem before the pandemic, but especially during the pandemic. The budget provides $4.6 million to early childhood education through Smart Start, including much-needed pay raises for pre-K teachers and the launch of a program that's near and dear to my heart, as many will know, the Wake Three School Program, which is going to see its first entering class of three, of low-income three-year-olds into high-quality early childhood education this fall. And of course, the $50 million increase to the school system will provide enough additional funding to our school board partners to make great headway on educator compensation, help them address the myriad challenges that they face. And certainly, this has been an extremely trying time, especially amid continued state underfunding of our public education system, of which we should continue to be mindful. In particular, this will hopefully, as Vice Chair Thomas and others have highlighted, this will hopefully empower the school system, if it so chooses, to raise the minimum wage for employees to $16 an hour. Not where we want to finish, but it's a huge milestone for our folks nonetheless. And especially near and dear to my heart, and especially with the sunset of very relevant federal food security programs for our public school system, we're expanding universal breakfast programs to four new schools and universal lunch programs to two schools. And I really want to appreciate the collaboration and the partnership of the public school system, and in particular, thank Chair Lindsay Mahaffey for her leadership generally, but also... also for being so collaborative as we've worked to figure out what we are able to do in terms of improvements this year in our universal breakfast programs. We know that they are one of the best things, pound for pound, dollar for dollar, that we can do for kids whose families are struggling to get by. We know it increases outcomes in the near term and in the long run, and I'm very, very proud that we're able to expand our offerings in that regard, especially in such a difficult and needed time. Lastly, as has been touched on by a couple of my colleagues, and because it's been a topic of some conversation in the community, I also want to note again that the budget we approved today does not include the same salary increase for commissioners that came out of staff study of comparable counties some weeks ago. I want to be very clear, I do not support that magnitude of an increase. The commission does not support that kind of an increase, and it is not included in the budget. A lot of folks have talked to us about efficiencies and making sure that we're good, thoughtful stewards of public tax dollars, and as has been alluded to in a lot of cases previously, we try to our best to keep the property tax rate in particular low. It is and will continue to be lower than it is in most counties in the state. I was looking back through, a couple of weeks ago, the historic tax rate in Wake County, and it turns out that we are about the average property tax rate of Wake County over the last 35 years. Why 35 years? That's all the data I could find. So back in 1988, when I was probably just starting first grade, the tax rate in Wake County was about 10 cents higher than it is right now. I also want to point out that in this budget, not only are there a lot of improvements, some of which, for better or worse, carry price tags, but there are about $15 million just in, or not 15, $50 million just in departmental requests alone that are not being funded. And I am appreciative, without opining on the rightness or wrongness of any individual decision, I, I am appreciative that we are taking a very critical eye in our own spending so that we can maximize the efficacy and efficiency for our taxpayers. So I want to end where I started, which is to, again, thank our staff, County Manager Ellis, who maybe can take one day off of budget planning and then get back to it later this week, and all of our staff for doing such an excellent job, for being so supportive, and also for my colleagues as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. This budget invests in programs and services that improves the safety, health, and well-being of our people so they can thrive. I first want to thank my colleagues, my commissioners. As you may possibly imagine, these folks have strong opinions and passions, which is why they ran for commission. But this is a great collaborative commission that works together, as has been shown tonight. It takes a lot of work, and a word of thanks to Commissioner Calabria for his work in talking to all of our commissioners, and a great deal, that we all talk with each other, but many times it, it takes a driver who can put all of this together, which Commissioner Calabria did. So from that standpoint, I am very, very proud of this budget and what it represents to the health and safety of our citizens here in Wake County. It's also important for you to know that this commission and this county is driven by goals. These commissioners spent a great deal of time thinking about the goals that make your lives better, and you can go to our website, wakegov.com, and those goals are listed out. The manager and his staff spends a great deal of time tracking these goals, working on these goals, and these goals are represented in this budget. So the things that Commissioner Calabria highlighted so well tonight in detail are represented in the goals that this commission brings forward, things such as behavioral health, things such as affordable housing, things such as safety issues such as EMS, things such as the sheriff, and obviously things such as the quality of life of open space parks and greenways, and of course, education. Not only public education, but also K-12, but also Wake Tech and pre-K, and now Three School. All of this education, which truly makes our community unique. But let me also say that for us to be able to serve you, we also have to serve our staff. And so many times I've said, being someone who's been in the corporate setting for over 30 years, in my career, I've never had the opportunity to work with such a great, talented, professional, and dedicated force as the public servants that serve you every day. But to continue to keep these people in place, we have to pay them. And so from that standpoint, as our Vice Chair says, to put our own oxygen mask on first, much of this budget is to allow us to pay the people what they deserve so they will stay and continue to provide you the services where you can thrive. And a great example of this is with our EMS program. And when we raised the salaries of our EMS program so they could answer the call, when you picked up the phone and dialed 911, we were able to get so many more people who signed up to be an EMS worker. And now we have programs through Wake Tech and programs specifically through our Wake Works program, so we can train people to keep you safe at home when you pick up that phone and you desperately need someone at your home to save a loved one. This is a great budget. And to that end, it is my pleasure to be able to, to say, Wake County, you have been well represented by this commission, and we believe in you, we believe in the health and safety of our community, and to that end, I look forward to voting for this budget so that we can collectively be the best place to live in America today. Commissioners, any other comments? Dr. West, please.
Just a brief comment. Someone said, "The truth will set you free," and none of us really have a grasp on the full truth. I truly believe God made us different to have different perspectives, but I do think it's very important, during the gridlock that we have, I guess, in our democracy right now, that we are committed as a board to build relationships, working as a body, and also we are committed to working with the General Assembly. And it gets kind of difficult sometimes because we are moved away, unfortunately, from a shared vision where that it seems as though that we tend to put each other down. So I'm just encouraging everyone, who have any role in this, that we'll come back to a democracy where all people are working together, and all people have an opportunity to have a, a good quality of life and a peace of this great society and the benefits. And that's something I worked, worked on for, worked on about 21 budgets with the Raleigh City Council. I've been working on this, for us to come closer together and eliminate this gridlock.
Thank you, Dr. West. All right, we're, we're about to wrap it up, Commissioners. Any other comments before we move on? All right, hearing none, then there has been a motion that's properly made and seconded regarding the approval of the budget for the, the 23-year. If there's no other comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioners. All right, we'll move on to the final item before we move on to appointments, and I appreciate my Commissioners for being able to allow me to put this on the agenda. First, we want to thank our good friends over the General Assembly for their action this past week in terms of Medicaid expansion, when the Senate passed almost unanimously support of Medicaid expansion, which is why I asked my Commissioners to consider this resolution tonight. I can say, as a Commissioner, elected in 2014, and I'm, I'm also joined by a lot of my other Commissioners, we can say, probably the number one issue from a legislative perspective has been Medicaid expansion. It means, from a North Carolina perspective, over 600,000 of our residents would be able to receive health care. What it means for Wake County is over 60,000, 60,000 Wake County residents would be able to qualify for health insurance. Now, what does that mean? What that means is these people could receive primary care from a doctor, or a nurse practitioner, or PA. It means that they could receive behavioral health services, which right now they, there's just a crisis in behavioral health services. It means that they could receive treatment for the opioid addiction. These are the most vulnerable citizens in, in, in Wake County, and they could be receiving, they could be receiving health care through being insured. It also means thousands of jobs and keeping our health, and our hospitals safe, and nurses is employed, and behavioral health professionals employed, if we could expand Medicaid. Many ways, I like to say this, is that if you look at Denise Foreman and her work around behavioral health, and the folks over at Southlight and opioid addiction, and the folks at, at Wake Med and trying to serve the primary care, in so many ways, we're simply treading water. This could mean hundreds of millions of dollars coming into Wake County to keep our citizens healthy. So from that standpoint, it's so important for us to thank our good friends at the General Assembly for taking the first step by, one of the houses, the Senate passing Medicaid expansion, which is why we want to reach out to our other good friends in the House and ask them to consider also joining their friends in the Senate and approving Medicaid expansion, which is why, Commissioners, I am asking to, for us, for me to place in the record this motion for a resolution of support for closing the North Carolina Medicaid coverage gap, which reads as, whereas, healthy citizens and access to affordable care are key to the Wake County economy, and whereas, closing the Medicaid gap extends insurance to approximately 45,000 uninsured individuals in Wake County, and closes the gap to more than 600,000 across the state. And whereas, closing the health insurance coverage gap would drive over $1 billion in new business and healthcare activity in Wake County, generating additional county revenue and creating an estimated 4,000 jobs. And whereas, closing the insurance, the health insurance coverage gap would provide access to behavioral health care to address the opioid epidemic, and as reflected by dozens of deaths and hundreds of emergency department visits related to opioid overdoses, overdoses. And whereas, federal funding from taxes that North Carolinas have already paid will cover 90% of the cost for states closing the healthcare coverage gap to citizens who need access to affordable health care, and the other 10% would be paid by the hospitals. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wake County Commissioners urge the North Carolina General Assembly to close the Medicaid coverage gap in the North Carolin, and North Carolina as quickly as possible, adopted, if chosen by vote of this commission, on the sixth day of June 2022. So moved, Commissioners. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. West. Any discussion or comments?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make a comment because I think that this is kind of world-changing to some degree, and I'm glad to see this very positive movement, because it's been said, "What you do for the least of these, you do unto me." And I'm just foolish enough to believe, and excited enough that our General Assembly can come together and pass this.
Thank you, Dr. West. Do we should call it, Servanya?
Thank you, Chair Hutchinson. I was actually lucky to be at the NCGA on March 24th with Senator Wiley Nickel to have a press conference over Medicaid expansion. At the time, it didn't seem like they would pass it at the Senate, and it was actually very much of a pleasant surprise that it did pass. But I do want to give you additional facts, if you are going to talk to your House Representative, what you can add on to what Chair Hutchinson had mentioned on this resolution. And I'm going to give you some hard facts. People are actually dying because they don't have health care, and if we actually had Medicaid expansion, that could save a lot of lives, especially those who have terminal illness. You know, like qualifications for Medicaid, actually, you need to make $7,300 a year to qualify for Medicaid. Like, imagine that, $7,300 a year. Like, how can you sustain life and then just to qualify for Medicaid as it currently exists? And, and as you had said in this proclamation, it actually, in a time where we could really benefit in economic development and enhancements and more jobs, it, it could be a real economic stimulus to actually have Medicaid expansion happen here in Wake County. But this is like the, the most surprising thing. Like, during all these months that we don't participate in Medicaid expansion, the federal government has actually provided incentives every year. And they will nearly pay 95%, maybe even more, in that funding. Why are we leaving money on the table where we could be saving so many lives, including loved ones that you may have and, and friends? So please contact your state House rep and really urge them to pass this, because it, it will make a difference.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioners. Next is appointments. Vice Chair Thomas.
Thank you so much. I'd like to make a motion for the following appointments to be made on June 6th, 2022. The Capital Area Workforce Development has eight vacancies, six reappointments of Mark Butteronsino, Glenda Underwood, Harold Keen, Shanda Armstrong in the public sector for Wake, Rodney Carson, private sector for Wake, Melissa Short, also private sector for Wake, two resignations by Tony Marshall and David Johnson, and two recommendations by the Capital Area Workforce Development Board, Vic McCormick to fill a post-secondary education seat previously held by David Johnson, and Jill Straight to fill the community-based organizational seat previously held by Howard Manning. The City of Raleigh Appearance Commission has one vacancy and one appointment of Patrice Gilmore. The City of Raleigh Planning Commission has one vacancy and one reappointment of Roberta M.K. Fox. The Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team has four vacancies, two reappointments by Barry Bryant and Mary Morris as the primary, two resignations, Beth Johnson and Darlene Johnson, and three recommendations by the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team, Michelle Guariano, who's an alternate for Mary Morris, Michelle Lesnack, who's the Wake County Public School System primary, and Dawn Cornwell, from the Wake County Public Schools alternate. The Durham and Wake County Research and Production District, sorry, Durham and Wake Counties Research and Production Service District Advisory Committee has three vacancies and three reappointments, Mike Curry, Joanne Latham, and Daniel Tomso. The Fire Commission has four vacancies, two reappointments. Brian Sudima will move to primary in July. Brian McFetters will move to primary in July as well. Two resignations by Mark Matthews as of June 30th, and Edward Brinson as of June 30th. There is one recommendation by the Fire Commission of Ian Toms for a nonprofit seat. The Garner Planning and Appearance Commission has one vacancy and one reappointment, Gina B. Avent. The Historic Preservation Commission has one vacancy. That one vacancy is a seat previously held by Marshall Harvey, and there's one recommendation by the Wake County Historic Preservation for Suzanne Prince. The Human Services Board has six vacancies, four vacancies, two are the consumer of human service seats, one is an optometrist seat, and one is a psychologist's seat. There are two resignations, Angelica Harris, who is a consumer of human services seat, and Anna Inesta, who's also a consumer of human service seat. The Industrial Facilities and Population Control Financing Authority has three vacancies, three resignations, Gary Stires, Martin Brinkley, and Lisa Young. Two term completions, James Brown and Cecil Nance. One recommendation by Commissioner Matt Calabria for Grady Jackson to fill the chair vacancy seat previously held by Gray Stires. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council has nine vacancies, two resignations, one by Catherine Edmiston, who's a district attorney designee, and Carla Huff, a member-at-large. There are seven vacancies with category distinctions, two vacancies for persons under 21, one vacancy for a United Way or a nonprofit, one vacancy for the faith community, one vacancy for a Parks and Recreation designee, one vacancy for a district attorney designee, and one vacancy for a member-at-large. The Knightdale Board of Adjustment has two vacancies. Those two vacancies consist of open ETJ seats appointed by this board, and two recommendations by the Knightdale Town Council, Archie Hart as an ETJ representative- and two recommendations by the Knightdale Town Council, Archie Hart as an ETJ representative whose term will end February 29 of 2024, and Chris Fall, who is an ETC representative whose term will end February 28, 2025. The Library Commission has four vacancies, two reappointments, Lynn Edmonds from District Four and Abraham Jones from District Five. Two resignations of Alexandria Lindahl from District Two and Teresa Marcelin Little from District One. There's one recommendation by the mayor of the town of Roseville for Tony Kenyon in District One. Open Space and Parks Advisory Committee has three vacancies, two vacancies from District Three, which is resulting from a member resignation, and District Six, which is resulting from a member term completion. One reappointment of Robin Hammond, Soil and Water Representative. One recommendation by Chair Hutchinson for Sarah Martin to fill the vacancy seat for District Three. And one recommendation by myself, Vice Chair Thomas, for Sanford Bailey to fill the vacancy seat for District Six. Wake Technical Community College Board of Trustees has one vacancy and one reappointment by Dr. Sandra Wall Williams. So moved, Mr. Chair.
Nicely done, Ms. Vice Chair. Comments?
I'll second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, passes unanimously. Vacancies for next month?
Upcoming vacancies for July 2022. The Alcohol Beverage Control Board has two vacancies. There will be two reappointments. The Board of Adjustment has two vacancies. The Capital Area Workforce Development has one vacancy. The Fire Commission has six vacancies. Go Triangle Transit Citizen Advisory Committee has one vacancy. Holly Springs Board of Adjustment has one vacancy. It's an ETJ seat. The Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority has four vacancies. The Library Commission has one vacancy in District Two. The Town of Zebulon Planning Board has one vacancy. The United Arts Grants Panel has two vacancies. And the Wake Med Hospital Board of Directors will have one vacancy.
Great. Thank you. All right. Members, we're on to other business and informational items from the Board of Commissioners. Commissioners, is there anything to report? Hearing none? Mr. Attorney, is there a reason for a closed session?
There is not, Mr. Chair.
There's not? Okay, thank you. So, commissioners, that leads us towards the end of our meeting tonight. Let me just say, Mr. Manager, we thank you for all your work on this budget. We know it's a great deal of work on the part of you and your staff, particularly at the manager's office. And so we want to thank everyone for your hard work in getting us what we consider just an outstanding budget. I also, just, Wake County, it's very important to know that you have a great commission who is collectively working for you on your behalf to make your lives better. So I'm very proud of this commission and very proud and honored to be able to serve with this group of professionals. That being said, commissioners, I believe we've come to the end of our agenda. So there's, yes, sir, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Sig. I appreciate the praise. But you saw Michelle earlier today. But I also want